Yeah.
At least there are.
Meeting, I'm going to open up the meeting. And the first order of business is to determine a quorum. We have five commissioners here, so we have a quorum and we're ready to move on with the meeting. Next item is review and approval of the minutes. I sent a note out that they were accurate and complete. Is there any comments from the commissioners on the minutes? Do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Eyes have it, minutes are approved. First item of business, rezoning requests. RR number 926, property owner, Tritus Properties LLC. Applicant Jake Verenye, location Highway 78, Ridgeville 29472. Request zoning change from AR Cultural Residential to CLI Commercial Light Industrial, TMS 098-00-00-090, total acreage 13.84. Who from the staff is going to have that one?
That'll be me. Thank you. This is a request to rezone over 13 acres on Highway 78 from agricultural residential to commercial light industrial. The property does have direct frontage along Highway 78. You'll see here that a portion of it has already been subdivided and acquired by Dorchester County to account for the 78 road widening that's currently underway. There are some wetlands on the property. Disturbance of those wetlands would obviously require approval by the Army Corps of Engineers or SED, DHEC, or SEDS now, depending on jurisdiction. The property is located within the Employment Mixed Use Future Land Use designation, which does support the development of uses allowed in the CLI districts such as retail, light manufacturing, and warehouse uses. One of the requirements of the CLI district, Section 7910A, is that all applications for rezoning of property to CLI must provide a conceptual plan to demonstrate adequate vehicular circulation and avoidance of access on residential roads. I'm sure you saw in your packet that the applicant has provided that conceptual plan for you. Like I mentioned, Section 7910B prohibits access from CLI properties on residential streets, and this property only has frontage along Highway 78, so no residential streets would be impacted by rezoning or subsequent development of the parcel. I would like to note that the plan is purely conceptual in nature, and any approval of a rezoning does not constitute approval of the plan that you all have seen in your packets. As usual, any proposed development on the property would be required to go through site plan review through our technical review committee process, at which point the site design would be reviewed against any applicable ordinances, and a traffic study would be performed if necessary. This property does fall within the water and sewer service area of DCWS, though availability and provision of service would have to be coordinated with them. That being said, staff recommends approval.
Did you receive any public comment after notification?
No.
Is there anybody here that would like to speak for or against the project? Is the applicant present?
On behalf of the applicant.
Would you care to come up and... Does the commission have any questions of the applicant? Your honor, questions, okay. Any discussion?
I can make a motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
I'll second that.
We have a motion to second for the discussion. All in favor? Motion that's presented.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda, RR number 927. Property owner, 754 Orangeburg LLC, applicant George Tupper III. Location 754 Orangeburg Road, Somerville 29483. Request zoning change from R2 Single Family Residential to CN Neighborhood Commercial, TMS number 14400-00-038, total acreage 2.55.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm up over here. Rather than change out, I'll just present from here. We received this application to accommodate the appropriate zoning of an existing business that's located at 754 Orangeburg Road, as well as provide for future development of the rest of the property and adjacent property along Orangeburg Road. The two properties here share an access and a frontage advisement off of Orangeburg Road about a half mile south of the intersection of Orangeburg and Central. This is adjacent to the Sunburst Lakes residential development. Existing zoning is R2 Single Family Residential. Childcare center that exists on the property is a legal nonconformity, was developed prior to the current zoning. The proposed rezoning would allow that childcare center to continue now as a permitted use by right, so they could expand that use if necessary with the current, with the proposed zoning. It will also provide for a variety of small-scale commercial uses intended to complement neighboring residential developments, as I laid out in the staff report. The property to the south is in with, within Dorchester County Water and Sewer, and the other property is actually within Dorchester County Water Authority and Somerville CPW. So it's kind of a mix-up here of different providers, but we believe they'll be able to figure that out with development in the future. Of course, our development restrictions apply, buffering, traffic studies if necessary. However, they are gaining access off of Orangeburg, and there's no impact to Sunburst Way that's already been dealt with on previous development of the property. So with that, the request to rezon has been evaluated against our 2018 comprehensive plan, analyzed to calculate site characteristics for this reason, for this and the reasons stated in the staff report. We're recommending approval of the rezoning to CN Neighborhood Commercial District. Received one phone call from the Sunburst Homeowners Association just with inquiry on the signs. No concerns noted.
With the project, with the proposal itself, there were no concerns?
No.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody that would like to speak for or against the project? State your name and address, please.
Yes, sir, George Tupper III. So one correction, I am representing the owners. The owners are Elaine and Miles Green.
Okay.
So they're the owners. It's just like Tim said, the zoning is being requested to go to CN. We've got an existing daycare business on the property, and the adjacent property to it is looking to do the CN for small mixed use in the future. The access is already there, coming off of Orangeburg Road.
Does any of the commissioners have questions of the applicant?
It looks like this is just a cleanup of something that's already there.
Basically, that's basically how Tim presented it to me. It's Robert, it was kind of, didn't know how it got into the situation it did.
Yeah, okay. Well, thank you.
Any other questions?
There's another parcel right behind it. Is this going to come up next also? Is this, is this, am I reading, are we doing two parcels here or one parcel?
The other parcel is 954 and 955.
Right.
It's a daycare, and so the adjacent property is to the north of the daycare. So it's beside it.
So we're taking them all at once, both TMSs?
Yeah, I thought we were taking both at once.
Yeah, the hearing has been for both parcels. The rezoning effort is for both parcels.
They're both by the same, they're both owned by the same owner.
Right, but it's two different TMS numbers. Just wanted to make sure. Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Puzzled? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, subdivision applications and requests, there are none. Street name requests, new street. There's one more.
928.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
This one right there.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, yes, RR number 928, thank you for correcting me. Property owner, The Intrust Group, applicant Janet Lieber. Location Highway 78, Ridgeville 29472. Request zoning change from AR Agricultural Residential to CLI Commercial Light Industrial, TMS number 098-00-00-240, total acreage 2.12.
Okay, take it away.
Thank you. This is another request to rezone about two acres at the corner of Highway 78 and Wagon Trail Road from AR to CLI again. Similar to the request we heard earlier, this property has frontage, direct frontage along Highway 78, and a portion of it has already been subdivided and acquired by Dorchester County for the 78 widening. This property is also located within the Employment Mixed Use District, which supports the uses allowed in the CLI district. Further requirements of Section 7910A, the applicant has provided a conceptual plan that was given to you in your packets as part of the application. Section 7910B again prohibits CLI traffic on residential streets, meaning that no access can be taken off of Wagon Trail Road, which serves predominantly residences. And the applicant's conceptual plan did delineate that. Again, I would note that the plan is just conceptual, and approval of the rezoning does not constitute approval of the plan that you have been provided, and any proposed development on the property would be required to go through the technical review committee process, at which point the site design would be reviewed against any applicable ordinances, and a traffic study would be performed if necessary. This property does fall, again, within the water and sewer service area of Dorchester County Water and Sewer, though availability and provision of the service would have to be coordinated with them. And for those and the reasons stated in the staff report, staff recommends approval.
Now, did you receive any public comment on this?
No, sir.
Is there anybody here that would like to speak for or against this proposal? Is the applicant here? State your name and address, please.
Corey Stallings, 150 Booth Ranch Road, Somerville. I'm with Live Oak Consultants for the civil engineer on the project, just here to answer any questions.
Okay. Anybody have any questions from the commission?
Yeah, is there sewer to this property?
Uh, no, sir. Not that I'm aware of.
Put it in a septic tank probably, or?
Yes, sir.
And water also be a well, or?
There's an easement for a future water. I don't know what the timeline is on when that's going to reach there, so if it's developed soon, it would be a well.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Discussion? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody entertain a motion? I'd entertain a motion.
I'd entertain, oh, sorry, motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, subdivision applications and requests, of which there are none. Street name request, new street name, Carriage Wood Circle Private Road to be built in the crossing off Givens, off Givens Road, Ridgeville. Any discussion on this at all? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve Carriage Wood Circle?
Second.
You can have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Old Business, RR number 925. Property owner, Blythewood Development, applicant Chip Wyatt. Location Highway 15 North Harleyville, South Carolina 29448. Request zoning change from CG General Commercial District to I Industrial District, TMS number 008-1-00-048 and 070, total acreage 97.44. Ms. Reinsen?
Yes, we received a request from the applicant to withdraw this application while they decide to study the site further, so at this point, no action is needed from Planning Commission on this item.
All right, thank you. Okay, Old Business, item B, ZTA-2407. Text amendment to the Dorchester County Zoning and Land Development Standards Ordinance number 404-13, as previously amended with respect to Article 10, Section 10.4.11, mineral resource extraction operations for the purpose of limiting the proximity of new mineral resource extraction operations from existing permitted operations. This is the third time this has been before us. I'd like to open up for discussion amongst the members of the commission. Anybody?
I don't, I don't, I don't like it, and I'm not going to vote for it. I think it's a, it's a taking, actually, and, you know, this is where the minerals are in the county. And the, the problem is not with the mining. I don't think anybody had a problem with the mining. The problem is the transportation of the product. Some of these mines are DOT mines, and I think that we need to go to the state and ask that they help us fix these roads since this product is going to their projects. And I'd like to take it off the agenda, but we'll have to discuss it.
I actually agree with every part of that, so.
Okay. Well, we could, I could entertain a motion to either approve or deny.
I'll make a motion to deny.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
I think it goes without saying that people are upset with what's happening to the roads, and this was an attempt to, or is an attempt to mitigate some of that. And yet, the two and a half miles is a, you know, that's a, that's a lot to think about there. It kind of, it kind of puts whoever's got a mine, puts them in the catbird seat, because, you know, I mean, nobody can be within two and a half miles, I guess. I mean, so it just, I'm not sure if this is the right solution. I think I'm agreeing with what you're saying. And it is tearing up of the roads and, you know, is the concern, and that's where the sand is. So I totally understand why you motion that way. Wish we had a better solution.
You know, I, I look at this, I worked with, with Kira and her staff when they were developing the mining standards, and, and you guys, you put a lot of effort into addressing the environmental concerns and, and noise concerns, and I think you did a very good job of doing that. We did not foresee the roads issue, and we wouldn't have had a solution for it at the time, anyway. And, and so that's, that's where I sit on this. There is no good solution right now.
I want to add something also, that hopefully County Council will take pause in this, or maybe study it further. We don't have a representative in the area that, that most of this land and most of the problems are. Ms. Harriet is in the house now, and we got to wait on an election in March, I think, before we have a voice, so, on council. So hopefully, council would take pause in this and, and push it back a little while they study it more.
Any further discussion?
I just want to reiterate that I think that this needs to be something that has had with our, you know, local delegation with, you know, going back to the state and discussing this further, for sure.
Okay. Well, all in favor of the motion to deny?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. New Business, East Edisto Community Plan Revision, Plan 4 Revision, Summers Corner. Property owner, Lennar Carolinas LLC, applicant Thomason Hutton. Location Clayfield Trail, acreage 409.03, TMS number 168-00-00-008. That's yours?
That's mine. So you all have approved Community Plan 4. You did this back in March of '22, but as the developer has been going through the development of this area out here, just based on changes in market conditions, they have made some changes to their plans. Everything is in line with what the East Edisto Form Based Code allows. They're altering some of their blocks, they're redoing some of their, their roads within the neighborhoods, and they're moving the site of a pump station. And so none of this is, you know, all that big of a change, however, under the Form Based Code, it does require, because this is a revision to a community plan, community plans are the only plans that Planning Commission sees out in East Edisto, it does require coming back before Planning Commission for approval of those modifications.
Is anybody here to speak for the applicant? Or not? Now, this is where you have to recuse yourself, right?
Yep, he just got here, I don't know.
Okay.
Would you like me to step forward?
Yes, please.
Good timing.
State your name and address, please.
John Marsher, 1246 Julian Clark, Charleston, South Carolina.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I must recuse myself at this time.
Any questions from the commissioners?
Yeah, go ahead, Bert.
Everything's in order.
Yeah, everything meets all of our requirements as far as the Form Based Code goes. It's, it's just that this kind of plan requires Planning Commission approval.
Mr. Pratt?
I have no, I was going to ask basically the same questions that the staff has reviewed this and is comfortable with it, because this, this is a lot, you know?
Yeah, there's, there's a lot going on in these plans, but in the end, from the approved set of plans, it really isn't a big adjustment. And the only, the only other thing that I would note is that as part of going through the community plan process, they will need to do a boundary survey plat, and that would have to be done before we, at the staff level, stamp the plans as approved. So that's the only condition that we would put on it, is that they need to have that boundary plat done, but that's pretty standard.
Do you have one question? Y'all going to bring the coffee shop back?
That would be a Lennar question. I think they're trying to find someone for that right now.
Okay. Got you on the record now.
Yep.
Well, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, appointment of committee for 2025 officer election. Mr. Carter called me today. He said that he would volunteer to chair the commission.
Okay.
And he had said that Mr. Pratt expressed an interest of participating.
I was voluntold.
Okay, voluntold. And he suggested Jennifer also, but Jennifer isn't here today. I, I'd hate to saddle somebody with it without them being able to defend themselves.
I'd make that motion.
Make your motion.
Well, I can't do, I don't think I can do that, because I'd be voting for myself, so I'm going to let you just take over a share and make that appointment, I think.
Well, I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. Pratt and...
Mr. Pratt and Jennifer? Okay.
And Mr. Carter, right?
Okay.
And Mr. Carter, correct?
And Mr. Carter, yes. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I don't have anything to report. How about the director?
Yeah, the only other thing is just a reminder about continuing education credits. I think most of you have been diligent about getting me those certificates as they've been coming in, but if any of you still need ours, just get with me. I think we still have some online training videos that you can watch from home, and I can send those to you.
I would, I would ask to please resend them to me. I know they're in my email somewhere, but...
Yeah, I can do that.
I see them like, you know, today or tomorrow.
Okay.
I know that hours upon us.
The problem with some of those things are having to sit down at 1:00. So if it was a self-study type thing, it would be a lot easier.
Yeah, I can check. Most, a lot of times, the State Continuing Education Advisory Committee has stated that if it's live and that provides you the opportunity to ask questions, that it counts for hours, but if it's not live, it doesn't. But I'll double-check on that for you and see if there's any others that you can watch that might not be live.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Nope.
Okay. This is the opportunity for public comment. Any comments from the public? Yes, sir?
Yeah, my name is David Provenzano, 217 Railway Drive, Dorchester. I'm arising to express dissatisfaction with the planning committee's inability to resolve the resource amendment for the last three or four months. We look forward to relief in our area, not just the roads issues. While that is an issue, it is also the congestion, the increased traffic, continually increasing traffic in the area from the sand trucks that are in our area. Adding the amendment to the regulations... Adding the amendment to the regulations would allow that to be diffused or dispersed a little bit more than it is right now. Right now, there is no limit on any mining in that area, and adding more, even though the sand belt is claimed to be very specific to that one area, the reality is that's not true. It spreads across the state and into multiple counties. To not limit the density of the mining is irresponsible. That's all I gotta say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other further comment? Well, I'd entertain a motion.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Okay, you are, we are adjourned. Everybody have a happy holiday.